So we're gonna call the meeting to order. We have everybody here but Jake. And we have additions to the agenda. And everybody got the notes? We have two PAWS assignments there. Does everybody see that? Okay, and so then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with additions.
Same.
I have a motion from Cheryl. I'll be a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
I have nobody.
Everybody's signed up? Okay, so then we're gonna move to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the minutes, the treasurer's report, personal items. Cheryl, if you want to address the treasurer's report maybe?
Yeah, I had a chance to go in and check on the bills. There was nothing out of the ordinary. I just noted a few things. Our floor in the media center, the bill came in for that. And if you haven't seen it, they did a wonderful job. Quite a change in there from the old carpeting. PAWS rooms renovations are, I think, finished now. They did some painting and put in some doors. That was in the plan. And playground, I believe, is finished now also. So we should see that too. It's quite an innovation. The next batch of Chromebooks is in. Everything's going as planned. So the bills were just normal, the way they were said to be.
Very good. Then it looks like we have a donation.
Yeah, we did receive a donation from a community member. Community member prefers to remain anonymous. They are going to be providing some funds to provide some relief for outstanding lunch bills. So once that is accepted, we will get that taken care of and move forward. So very generous, in my opinion.
And then anything you'd like to address in addition on personnel?
Yeah, I could just run down these. We have a series of hires for food service in here. Gwen Gleave, Lori Nygaard, and Ruth Larson are all kitchen employees. Mary Ann Hemisch is a kitchen employee that's resigning. Brett Bungam resigned his custodial position. Anita Flanders is the innovation center facilitator. Lynn Bierman will see some increased hours in the kitchen. And then Melissa Bell Warner will also be joining the kitchen staff as well. PAWS assignments are in there. Please remember, there are the two additions to the PAWS assignments. That is a good problem to have. We actually hit, I believe, our 90th registrant for PAWS, which is up compared to what it has been. And so that's where those additional personnel pieces are coming. And then we have our junior high football coaches and a current employee who is applying for a leave of absence and has the appropriate paperwork for that leave to be approved. It would be my recommendation to approve all of the personnel items in front of you.
So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Thomas. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
From Maggie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Okay, then we're going to move to communication items. So it looks like our big leader is gonna talk to us first.
I have just a couple of items. Today, obviously, was a busy day. Back-to-school workshop kicked off today. Tomorrow will be open house in both buildings. And then next Tuesday will be the first day of school. So it's here and things are moving quickly. Later this week on Thursday, UNESCO will be out to have a meeting with our admin team. That will happen Thursday morning to get that process rolling and get things going with the final stages of the design process for the facility project. One of the requests that I am getting from UNESCO is they would like to identify two or three board members to participate in that process. So that is something that the board needs to consider. And I would be asking at the September 24th board meeting for those board members to be identified so that we can have them participate in that process. I know that the facility piece up to this point has basically been board of the whole, meaning all board members have been a part of that. That is not going to really work for this final design components. So we are going to need two, maximum three, board members. I do think throughout the process, those board members can have a standing agenda item to report back to the full board. I do believe there's still a way for the full board to feel like there's a voice in this final process. But as far as people at the table at the design process, we really only need the two or three board members. So something for the board to consider. We'll be taking that up in September.
Do they have a time of day or day a week type of meeting plan yet?
No, they haven't. And the only thing that I've told our admin team is that my expectation is there is 100% flexibility, that when they see that I am sending them a UNESCO meeting or a facility project meeting, my expectation is that they will do everything possible to get that on their calendar and be in attendance. We are in a tight timeframe in order to finish the design, to be able to get the specs out to bid. And we can't waste precious days in trying to coordinate calendars and stuff like that. We need to be able to do this as efficiently as possible. So I don't have a set date or time or anything like that. I would suspect that once they get the process on paper, we probably will have three or four meetings that will be all scheduled at once so that everybody would know well in advance. Okay? Other than that, you know, like I said, it's go time. Students will be here on Tuesday and then these buildings both come alive. At least this one, the elementary building, has had students in it all summer and just got done with vacation Bible school a couple of weeks ago when there were a lot of kids there. And so it seems like there's been a lot of kids in the elementary school. But it'll be good to have students back. Questions for me? All right.
Cool. Then we have committee and organizational reports. I have a committee report on some of the union contracts. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, so as you saw in the notes, we have three of the contracts that we're gonna work with tonight. Matt, I can say that our teachers' contract is done. We can't accept that till the next meeting.
We have a tentative agreement with the teachers. I'm not sure where the teachers are in the ratification process, but I would suspect that in the coming week or so, I will hear from them whether it was approved or not. And then the plan would be that the September business meeting on September 24th, that contract would come to the full board.
Okay, so that's coming along really well. We have just a few things to go with administration staff. I think we can do that. And that's pretty much everything we have. Student representatives, do you guys have anything?
Nope.
I'm glad you're here, I do have to say. Go ahead.
I just wanna say this is my last meeting today as a student representative. Thank you for letting me be a part of the school board. It was a great experience and I really enjoyed it. I'd like to thank Mrs. Whaler for referring me and just kinda starting this program. Mr. Hewitt for helping me out, Mr. Bullard, and of course, the rest of the school board for allowing me to serve as a student representative. This won't be the last time I'll be on the board, hopefully. Hopefully, as I be a community member in Painesville, I'll give back to the community in different ways and still be around. Just wanna say good luck to Ashley and the newest student representative. And the rest of the students and staff at Painesville hopefully have a good school year. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake, very much. So then we will move to old business, district goals. We're just gonna slide through that right now. Then we're gonna go to new business. Painesville Area Schools Faculty Handbook.
So this is the exact same handbook that was at the work session. There have been no changes since the work session. Again, it would be the principal's recommendation and my recommendation to approve the handbook as presented.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. A motion by Rick, second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Elementary School Student and Parent Handbook.
Again, same handbook that was presented at the work session. My apologies on the first linked on this agenda. Had an earlier version of the handbook that I inadvertently attached to it. It was corrected today, so what's linked now is the current recommended handbook. The list of changes are the same. Again, it would be the elementary principals and my recommendation that we approve the handbook that was discussed at the work session and here today.
I'll make the motion.
So we have a motion from Thomas to approve the Painesville Area Elementary School Student and Parent Handbook. I'll be a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Okay, then we're gonna move down a little bit. We have the, make sure I'm getting them all here, Secondary School Student and Parent Handbook.
Same as the first two. It's the same material that was presented at work session. None of the changes have been modified or anything. It's the same stuff that Mr. Arline visited with the board at the work session on. Be his recommendation and my recommendation to approve the secondary student handbook as presented.
I'm moved to approve the secondary school student handbook.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Thomas. A motion from Cheryl, second from Thomas. Any further discussion on the secondary school student and parent handbook? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Then we're gonna move to the extracurricular activities handbook.
This was also a topic of conversation at the work session this month. Max was here and kinda walked through what those changes are and the rationale for making those changes. Again, it would be activities director and my recommendation to approve the handbook as presented.
This is the old version too.
Yes, this is still the only version. As soon as the board approves it, he's gonna go and fix those highlights and delete the green or red, whatever color it was, and he'll clean it all up.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2019-20 Painesville Area School Extracurricular Activities Handbook. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Maggie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Okay, then we're gonna go to the food service tentative agreement.
I could just go through the highlights on this. Anybody who is on the food service negotiating committee, if you have additions after I'm done, by all means, chime in. The pay increase on the food service contract is 1.5% per year of the contract. We did do some work on the group insurance so that the contribution would be $5,490 in the first year and $7,000 in the second year. Their insurance is no longer prorated based on 2,080 hours a week. It is a standalone contribution based just for this group. Food service also did get rid of Article 8, their leave provision. And what was replaced was discretionary leave. So they will have nine days of discretionary leave. They can earn additional days as they have more years in the district. So that is a change rather than doing the categorical leave. It would be discretionary leave. The approach with that will be similar to other contracts that you'll see. This will be a two-year trial period. We have a memorandum of understanding in this contract that would address discretionary leave. In the interim, as we progress through this contract, we will get together and kinda review leave usage and see how things are going. And then at the next contract, both parties will have a conversation on whether discretionary leave is something we want to continue or if we want to go back to categorical leave. The rest of the contract was pretty much stayed the same. There is steps in each of the years if they qualify for that on the salary schedule placements. But in general, that is a summary of the food service agreement. Questions on the food service agreement? Total dollars do fit within our budget guidelines. And it would be my recommendation, and I believe the recommendation of that negotiating committee, to accept this contract. Any of those negotiating committee members have anything to add? By all means, go ahead.
You've covered it very nicely. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the 2019-21 to 21 Food Service Employee Master Agreement as presented.
I'll make that a motion.
I have a motion from Rick.
I'll second.
I have a second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Okay, then we're gonna move to the custodial tentative agreement. And Matt, I'm back to you.
Okay, just looking at the custodial agreement, again, the wage increase is 1.5% on the custodial agreement. They would be eligible for steps if they are in a place on the salary schedule that permits that. The group insurance, their contribution would go to $5,490 year one and $7,000 on year two. We also did some modifications to the boiler license reimbursement. We addressed those per hour reimbursements that they have. If they have a boiler license, there's some enhancement on that as well. Again, it's very similar parameters as the food service. The 1.5% on wages and then addressing the health insurance were really the big components of this disagreement. As with the food service, it would be my recommendation along with the negotiating committee to approve the custodial contract as presented. Questions I would certainly try and answer.
So do we have a motion to approve the 2019-21 Custodial Employees Master Agreement as presented? I'll make the, we have a motion. Do you wanna be the motion?
Either way.
Okay, Cheryl, I'll be a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Then we are gonna move to the paraprofessional tentative agreement. And Matt, I'm back to you.
Okay. I just need to pull something up here to make sure I am communicating this one correctly. Okay, so paraprofessionals tentative agreement, again, 1.5% is the wage increase. Steps if they are eligible for those steps. Health insurance is slightly different. Health insurance would go to $4,000 contribution year one, $6,000 contribution year two. We do get rid of the connection to, again, the proration of health insurance. So in this agreement and moving forward, the criteria for health insurance would be they just have to work the 30 hours per week and then they would be eligible for the $4,000 contribution. The other piece was on the second year of the agreement, there is a longevity payment of 20 cents per hour for those paraprofessionals that have been in the district eight years or more. So that would also be a component of just year two. That is not part of year one. Again, it's very similar to the concept of the food service and custodial. The 1.5% is pretty much a trend. The addressing of health insurance is the other trend that was throughout all of the groups. It would be my recommendation and that negotiating committee to approve this tentative agreement. And I will try and answer any questions if you have any.
So we'd entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2021 Paraprofessional Master Agreement as presented. Do we have a motion?
I can do that.
We have a motion from Ashley.
I'm sorry.
A second from Thomas.
Something I didn't.
Any other discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. Okay, then we are now on the general obligation bond resolution. And Matt, back to you.
I'm gonna have Jody come over to the podium and walk you through the handout in front of you. I'm gonna just clean this stuff off.
Okay, well, congratulations on your successful referendum election, first of all. Exciting to see those results. And we're looking forward to seeing all the improvements made for the students here at Painesville. So once we're done with the money, make sure you invite me back again to see what it all gets used for. Start off with the cover page. We know that your voters authorized the issuance of up to $16,090,000. And we'll talk about some of the other legal limitations that we need to take into consideration as we move forward with your bond issue so you see how we arrived at that $15,200,000 amount. So turning to the inside front cover, you'll see at the very top there, we mentioned the $15,200,000. The resolution that you have before you tonight, of course, will have you moving forward at the full amount of authorization at the $16,090,000. But we expect to get a premium bid from the winning underwriter. And maybe you saw some of those results yesterday, Bruce. But that has been the trend lately, that they provide additional cash upfront. You can keep some of that cash in your construction fund, but there's a limit to what they'll allow you to keep. So I'll walk you through that schedule in just a minute. In the middle of the page there, you'll see that the term of the bond issue is 20 years, as we've been talking about, and that we will have a call date on these bonds. So we have, for those of you who've been on the board a little bit longer, we've done some refunding bonds over the years. And we'll have the opportunity to refund or refinance these bonds at that call date. We are having you participate in the state credit enhancement program, so you'll see a little description of that. That language is included in the resolution that you have before you tonight. There's no cost to participate in that program. And you get a nice, high rating from the rating agency by participating in that program. So we'll definitely want you to take advantage of that, and the resolution includes that language. You will need to go through the bond rating process again. I know that Moody's recently took a look at your district and gave you an upgrade. So you're now at an A1, which is a nice, high rating. And we hope to have them affirm that rating would be the outcome that we're looking for going forward. Since they took a look at you pretty recently, we wouldn't expect them to make any changes. They knew that you guys were moving forward with a bond referendum, so there shouldn't be any concerns or any red flags that we know of. Turning to the next page then, you'll see that we will solicit competitive bids, just like we have in the past for the district. We're getting lots of bids from underwriters and really nice low rates. We were talking about the rate that New York Mills got yesterday for a bond issue that was a 16-year term, 1.99%. So they were thrilled. I got a hug from the superintendent when I walked in. So that was nice, yeah. So they're very happy up there and worked out very well for them. You'll see a description of the premium pricing and a little bit of language at the bottom of that section. They're talking about that we'll just make sure on the day of sale that you're within all of the legal parameters and that we can maximize the amount that you have available to your construction fund and are within the amount authorized by your voters, of course. So turning to page three then, just to mention at the bottom of the page there that we work in conjunction with your bond attorney at Knutson, Flynn &amp; Dean's. Bond Trust Services as your paying agent. You're required to have a paying agent if you're participating in the state credit enhancement program. So you guys have used Bond Trust Services in the past. And then the rating agency is Moody's. So same as what you are used to seeing with the rating agency. On page four then, now all of the fun begins from both the construction process and from the bond sale process. So to give you an idea of the steps that we'll go through now, tonight, you have the pre-sale report and the resolution. We will have a due diligence call to go through the official statement. We've already been gathering information from the district to prepare that official statement. And that's like a prospectus that goes out to the investors. We'll distribute the official statement. We'll have a conference call with the rating agency. We'll receive the proposals on the day of your September regular board meeting and present the results to you that night. And hopefully you award the sale and everybody gives me a hug. That's the plan, right? And then we will close, so you'll have your funds on October 17th. The attachments that we have included, if you turn to page five, these are the exact same schedules that we needed to prepare for you, that you included in the document that went to MDE for their review and comment process. So these should look familiar to you. And you'll see here how we lay out the authorized bond amount, the estimated bond amount. And you'll see the primary reason for the bond amount that we expect to issue being lower than the authorized amount is that big re-offering premium that we're expecting to get. You can keep that cash to a certain extent, but at some point in time, you have to downsize the bond issue to stay within the legal limits. If you look at that net available for project costs, that's in bold within the use section.
Can you explain that a little more? So you can keep certain amount of the cash, but it generally is for the project. In essence, it looks to me like we are in the process saving our taxpayers some money as a net result.
Yes, for sure, yeah. And we'll talk about that. But you'll also get more, so if you look at that net available for project costs, the When we sized this bond issue initially, we assumed no premium bid because we aren't sure. And we don't know until we get the sale results for you in September what it will be. We could be issuing closer to the $16 million figure. We'll just see how the bids come in. And each underwriter will give us a different mix in terms of the bid that they provide to us. So if you look back at your review and comment schedule, which I have here with me today, we were aiming at $16 million even on that line. So the additional dollars that you can keep, assuming that you got this bid, would be $166,747. So, which is great. I mean, you'll want that and you need that for your projects. You wanna maximize what you can put in your project costs. So that is what we're expecting now rather than the flat $16 million. And the line item that we've added to this schedule is the initial deposit to the construction fund. So that bold amount also assumes that you're going to earn interest at a rate of about 1% over the time that you have it invested. You will likely, we try to be really conservative on that number, so you'll likely learn and earn in excess of that and have even more dollars available for your project cost. The dollar amount that your bond attorney has us watch on the day of sale is that deposit to the construction fund. That deposit to the construction fund is limited to the authorized bond amount, the $16,090,000, less legal and fiscal costs. So that's the magic number that we'll be watching on the day of sale to make sure that we don't exceed that. If you earn more in interest while you have your funds invested, while the construction period is underway, totally fine. You'll have more for your projects. But we do need to watch that limit, that initial deposit to your construction fund. And so that's why as you get a larger premium or a smaller premium, we'll be adjusting the par amount of your bond issue accordingly, to keep you legal. Makes sense? And the bid that we get will definitely not be these numbers, but this is our best guess at this point in time based upon the bids that we've been getting recently. Okay? So that's the good news. You should have more money for your project costs. More good news on page six. This is the updated debt plan, assuming the same structure that we put together initially for the review and comment. And we're gonna talk about another option in a minute. But just to take a look at this update, we had planned on an average interest rate of 3.75% because rates were quite a bit higher, just even up to a few months ago when we were preparing these schedules. And everyone thought rates were likely gonna start going up, but they've continued to come down. So now we're estimating a 2.82%. We still have about 25 to 30 basis points of cushion in that. So again, we don't know where rates will be a month from now, so we wanna make sure that we've got a little bit of cushion included in there. If you look at the debt levies, which are in that proposed debt section, that number is about $2.1 million less than what we were planning on as part of our initial schedule. So that's a direct savings to your taxpayers over that 20-year period of time. Looking at the next page then, page seven, this is also the structure, the initial structure that we talked about. So we can still set it up so that you have your payments wrapping around your existing debt, keeping a nice level debt tax rate over the period of time when both your new and existing bonds are outstanding and then over the life of that bond issue. So this is certainly a structure that we could move forward with. If you look at the next page, again, our best estimates at this point in time, assuming we would move forward with that structure, let's just look at the $160,000 home, for example. We were planning on a tax increase between taxes payable '19 and taxes payable '20 of about $76 or $6 a month. Now we're estimating that that would be $58 or $5 a month. So that's the impact that this structure would have, assuming all of these numbers turned out to be what we are planning on. And then we also then, just to show you.
Can we ask you questions as you go?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so say we come in at 2%. That will shift this out of Okay, so, say we come in at 2%, that will shift this automatically, again, similar to the, the first round.
Correct. Yep.
So, why do you identify that as true interest? Is that really the true interest?
It takes into consideration all of the different variables, so instead of just the straight, flat interest rate cost, it takes into consideration the premium, legal and fiscal costs, and all the other variables. So, it is the rate that we use to award the sale based on, and that's kind of industry convention, that everybody awards based upon the lowest true interest cost rate. So, we want to take all of those
The true interest is kind of your, your estimate of the, truly the best value with all the variables from each underwriter?
Yes.
I got you.
And know that every maturity, different than, like a home mortgage, you'll have a fixed rate, but every maturity, each year, has a separate interest rate associated with that principal payment. So, that's why we call it the average rate also. We average all of those rates, year by year, into that calculation. And then, we just kind of wanted to show you where rates have been. So, a little volatile over the years, but we're definitely at a point right now where rates have been coming down pretty significantly. So, we talked about timing after we got the great news about the referendum election, and Matt said, "Yep, let's go, it's, you know, it's a good time, and we're getting such great results." So, no reason to try to wait. I think you want to take advantage of the rates, and hopefully, they hold for another month. So, that is kind of where rates have been. The other option that we wanted to talk to you about, and this is something that New York Mills decided to go with yes, just yesterday, as a result of the results that they got on their bond sale. This is an option, you see the heading of it there, pre-sale estimates with the step-down structure. So, this is one example of a different structure that we could look at to pay off your principal more quickly. We could stay just a little bit under the tax impact rate that we, that we included in the initial schedules, but we could save some more on interest costs and provide you with some future flexibility in case you want to do any additional projects in the future, or if you just want to have a step-down for your taxpayers when you pay off that existing debt. So, this true interest rate is actually a little bit lower, I meant to update that, it's a 2.80% for this structure, because you're paying principal more quickly, you're saving about 200,000 dollars more in interest costs, so I think that's a nice benefit of looking at this particular structure. And then, if you look at the visual
That 200,000 dollars more in the whole term of the bond?
Yep, yep. And so, you'll see that we do have the, we have the, the blue bars here for the time that you still have existing debt outstanding are just a little bit higher, they're at the level that we told the community we thought they would be at, just, or just slightly under that, and then you would have a little step-down once you get to the point where you've paid off your existing debt. So, an option for you to think about, again, I think there's some nice benefits associated with it. Still have cushion built into this rate, so as Bruce mentioned, if we do get a rate lower than this, we'll just either bring all of those bars down a little bit more, or, you know, we can play around with the structure a little bit more somewhat on the day of sale. We do have to give the underwriters an idea as to what the structure's going to look like, and we're starting to put together your official statement now, so getting some direction from you tonight as to what option looks more attractive to you would be helpful, so that we can
These being options, this being options.
Yep, so either the one that we have included in the pre-sale report tonight, which is, which is what we, kind of the regular one that we had talked about as part of the election process, or an option that gives you a little bit less in terms of interest payments over time, as well as gives you some future flexibility with that step-down.
So, we're not unlike any other school, when we know someday we may have a, an operating levy that has to come, so it's kind of a, a juggling affair. Is one of these better in the preparation for an operating levy that could get to us?
Well, this one, of course, because then you've got a step-down coming up, but it depends upon if that's timed in accordance with when you're thinking about doing that. So, I'm not sure what your plans are in terms of that timing, and we could adjust
It doesn't work out, it doesn't work out exact as, I mean, the
I see that the timings are different.
Yeah. It's a year off, is essentially what it would be, but I, I just think the only, I want to just add two cents real quick, I
Yeah, we need some two cents.
I, I would like the board to seriously consider the step-down option. It is in line with the tax impact of what we were communicating with the public as we were talking about this project. I do think it does give the districts some flexibility moving forward with how they want to manage that step-down, whether it be managing it along with a operating referendum, whether it be managing it with having other building needs or something that might arise, it does give the district the most flexibility with that. So, personally, I think building in some sort of a step-down is, is an attractive feature of, of it.
And we save 200,000 dollars.
And it's the net lowest cost of, of cost to our taxpayers, yes.
So, in those cases, what's perception of the public? In essence, it will come off, just like we had the vote for, there's maybe the, the theory out there that the public would certainly like to see it a lot less than where it is, but the way this looks to me, like all we're talking about is a five-year span here, and it's going to come down to be probably less than your projection.
Yes, and you know
Am I reading this right?
You guys know we're always conservative, right? So, you can even see as part of our growth and value, that we left your tax base flat going forward. While you'll have some growth, to the extent that it's growth, growth in your existing properties, you're just going to be taxing those existing properties more, but to the extent you have real growth in new properties, then that helps spread the tax burden over, over more tax base, and helps keep the tax rate down for your existing properties too. So, I think, you know, we've got, again, because we have some conservative assumptions in here, I think the actual tax rate when we, when the, when the county gets around to calculating it next spring, will likely be less because of growth in some of your new properties and those kinds of factors too. So, hopefully, we'll get a lower rate on the day of sale, hopefully, your tax-based growth includes some new properties that help to spread the burden, you know, among a, over a high, over a higher value and help everybody out.
So, what does this look like if we get the lower rate? Let's say we get a 2%, okay? Then, the, what we said for an impact will not be the same, it will be less, because our impact is based upon 2.82%?
3.75 is what we communicated for the, when we were talking about the referendum.
Okay, but then, we have another summary in here
Correct.
That showed at last, but now, we're talking about having it go back up for a five-year period of time, but we still don't have the bond done, which means when we get the bond done, we have additional savings, so net effect is we could save 200,000 dollars if the bond comes in at a decent rate, we are in a position that it will probably be less than what we projected in the first place.
Yes.
Right? And we save 200,000 dollars.
Unless you want us to, unless you give me the direction to push the principal, continue to push the principal up until you get to that, until you get to the rate that we talked about as part of the pre-election estimates, and save even more interest, right? So, we can adjust on the day of sale, we can adjust those principal maturities. However, it would be better going into the sale if we knew which structure you liked better. So, the underwriters kind of want to have a sense for what the structure's going to look like, if it has a step-down, fine.
So, tonight, you would commit to that's the way it's going to be, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or do we have any other time to analyze this, if, say, the interest rates don't come in correct, or?
Yeah, I would say, we at least need some direction tonight on which structure you like, and then we can continue to talk a little bit about what kind of tweaks do we want to make on the day of sale. So, if our, if our interest rate does come in quite a bit lower, do you want us then to pass some of that savings on to the taxpayers over that initial five-year period, or do you want us to try to, you know, continue to push more principal into those earlier years, and save more interest costs over the life of the bond issue? We can make those tweaks on the day of sale without too much difficulty. If we totally change the structure, that's a little bit, you know, the underwriters might not like
So, for the school board, our perception of the public is going to be a, a factor here, what does, does everybody think?
I accept in favor of the step-down, I like the look of it, I like the savings of it. I think, yeah, most of us as homeowners and taxpayers understand that, that level of, you know, that interest and paying the interest down there. If the, if you drop that, that interest rate down, and we keep this up, and then we make that step-down greater later, we're not, we're not charging more than what we initially said we would anyways. So, I, I just like that concept.
If it were just, if it were just me making the decision for my stuff, yeah, the step-down would be obvious to me, but I think you hit the nail on the head, and some of it is just going to be perception, when we're going to have to do the operating. You know? People have kind of short memories, all they know is it went up already, and
What they know that it goes up already, though?
Right.
I mean, it, they've already been told what it would be, we're, we're talking about going lower.
But, I mean, I don't, I don't even know exactly how much it would go up for me, and, and I know that it's, it could change by the time I get my tax stuff, whatever. So, when I get it, all I know is, yeah, it went up.
But, yeah, I guarantee the people out there that would be watching this know exactly what it's going, supposed to go up.
I'm not worried about the people that are watching this. I'm worried about the people that aren't watching it, that are getting their tax bill and saying, "Oh, this is, this is high," and
What's going to go up regardless?
Right, definitely.
So, are they, the people who aren't paying attention, this, this is less potentially than what we said it was going to be, so
Expectations that we're not
The expectation is, we're not charging more with this model, we're charging the same or less, you know, the step-down.
It provides the school district an opportunity for better funding later, as well as even though that, that operating's going to miss it by a year, we're still going to find level of savings a year after the operating change, so
Because I worry about the perception of, if we can save 200-plus thousand, and we don't take advantage of, what perception does that say of, of us as well, by saying, "Well, we're not going to take advantage of, of that." I mean, that's real money, that's taxpayers' dollars that we potentially are saving by going with this model.
I think, I think you hit it right on the head. I mean, I think if you're looking at this, and the overall cost is the bottom line for taxpayers in the two models, one is 200,000 dollars less than the other, we have better have a pretty compelling reason as to why we need to go with the alternative that costs taxpayers 200,000 dollars more over the life of the bonds. And I don't necessarily know that we have that compelling argument to do that right now. So, I, I agree wholeheartedly, I think that that step-down model is something that will work. I see it as giving us some flexibility, I see it as also, if that's the model that's in place for 20 years, at the end of the day, it's going to save the, our taxpayers as much interest as we possibly can at this given time.
I agree, paying a little more upfront, and it's a little more, it's not like we're going to charge each taxpayer 50 dollars extra. Paying that little bit more to save 200,000 dollars to the taxpayers, that's a really compelling argument to go with the step-down, to me.
But, just to be real clear, we are in a step-down, we are not charging any more than what we projected.
Right.
So, that's the first thing.
Right.
Second thing is, we're already anticipating a reduction in the interest rate, which is going to, which is kind of giving us opportunity for the, the future years.
That's right.
We are saving 200,000 dollars, and if worst case is what we are projecting today, and we happen to come in with a 2% interest rate, then we're going to have the benefit of everything. The amount we projected initially is going to be less than projection, we save 200,000 dollars, and we get the loan paid off, the principal paid off, am I reading this right?
And your 200,000 dollars savings is going to grow if we get a 2% increase, or interest rate versus 2.82.
Right.
So, then, the savings is also going to grow if our interest rate comes in lower than what we're, what's in front of you
Good point, I didn't have that perception, nor did I have any idea that calculation was there.
And really, the debt service levies compared to what we initially projected in that first option even are 2.1 million dollars less, so it's huge, so that's, the step-down just gives you another 200,000. So, it's, this interest rate, the change, you know, the interest rate continuing to decrease and staying so low now, and hopefully, you know, knock on wood, it still does, it's, it'll be well over 2 million dollars.
And we are talking about, about 20 days here.
Right.
So, you're going to let the bond
Right, yeah.
So, it's not like we are projecting something six and eight months out.
Right. Yeah, no, we, you know, we feel pretty confident with the cushion that we have built in, and you never know, some, something, you know, a continent away from us can cause, can cause some problems with the municipal bond market. If something really went crazy, we would obviously talk to you about postponing the bond sale. You certainly could do that if we had, if something unforeseen happened that really caused a spike in the market to
So, if there was something in the world that took place, we wouldn't be compelled to hit that date. That would be my concern.
Right.
That there's a lot of turmoil.
Yep.
And how everybody reacts to that is, is interesting.
Yeah.
And so, therefore, we would have an out.
Normally, we would want to do that, you know, no, no, shorter than a day before the sale. So, I mean, if something happened that very morning, right around the time, and it caused a weird something, aberration in the market, we might be too late, but generally, we would know about something within a couple of days, you know, in advance, so
Well, there's a date in between now and the bond levy.
Right.
That was a disgusting date for the United States of America on September 11th, so
Right.
I know everybody worries about that stuff, but, so we're okay there, if something unusual happened
Absolutely.
At worst, we're going to, the rate for the first five years will be exactly what we projected, at the interest rate that you're projecting, and we are saving the taxpayers 200,000 dollars. If our interest rate is less, we are going to, our projection will go down as to what's going to cost on the statements.
Correct.
And you said we're going to increase, so, we're going to get another 600, you suppose? Well, anyway, whatever that number is. So, we would save a little more money there.
Right, yeah.
And, and we also have you guys in sales, and as you know, we're expecting the best from you.
Yes, we try.
Because you have the context with the underwriters, and we want lots of them, so we get a good deal on this thing.
Yep.
So
So, do you want a step-down a year earlier? Because, I mean, there's nothing magic about the five, are you good with this?
Well, what I'm hearing around the table, and just to, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is something that, that Jody and Greg and I can continue conversation, and what I'm hearing is the board, it sounds like there is consensus and agreement to move forward with the step-down, out of the fact that, one, it provides flexibility, two, it also saves our taxpayers' interest. So, how about if from there, we work on looking at tweaking this a little bit, and seeing what it can look like if we're talking about the step-down in 2023 versus 2024, and, and we can kind of play around with that and see what those, those scenarios come out as, with the idea that we'll move forward with a step-down approach.
Right.
And, and then we can finalize that.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
I'm interested. Everybody, we're all kind of on the same page? Okay.
Perfect.
Nice suggestion. That's why we have you to help us with some of that stuff.
Yes, well, we just
If we can save the taxpayers on this project, we are going to do that.
Yeah, I think it just, I mean, the interest rates have just come down so much that it gives you the opportunity to take, be a little bit more creative, so
So, at this point, we are entertaining a motion for a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2019A, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statutes, Section 126C, Point 552, guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from, we have a motion from Thomas, and we have a second from Cheryl.
I think it's got to be a
That's the State Credit Enhancement Program.
Oh, yes, so
All right, Ashley?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie.
Wonderful, thanks.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah, I like that, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so then, we are moving to UNESCO, Professional Service Agreement, and Matt, if I can just
Yep, so the, the, another resolution, the resolution would be formally actually engaging in hiring UNESCO. The important piece to this is the first paragraph. What we would be doing is hiring UNESCO for this professional services agreement. The total project costs cannot exceed the $16 million plus what is ever the bond issuance. And so it gets up to that $16,090,000 that was voter-approved. That is essentially what the, the service agreement is stating. It would be my recommendation to hire UNESCO and to have them onboard formally and move forward with having them finish the design process and get the project actually moving forward with, with construction.
Okay, if there's no questions, we're looking for a motion, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement. I'm assuming that should say with UNESCO?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Maggie. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I've been thoroughly impressed with UNESCO thus far. I feel so confident in what they're doing. Everything they have said and led us through has been pretty spot-on. And I'm just really impressed with their professionalism, their expertise, and what they've given to us so far. I'm excited. Like I have complete trust in, in what they've done so far. They've proven, at least to me, they know what they're doing.
I'm there with you. One thing that's nice is if you have confidence in whoever's building this thing, there's a lot of things that we're not going to have to be concerned about. So any further discussion?
Just what is the cost?
So it was based on the percentage that we had in the initial conversation with them. I do not have that.
Can we pull up the? And I don't have the, the-
If I get that, if somebody asks, I'd just like to be able to-
And I can get you, in fact, before any of this actually would move forward with construction, we will get a total turnkey cost from UNESCO. And that will be broken down as far as what it is in different aspects of the building, and it'll be very clear what it is that's being paid to UNESCO as well. That will be provided with the, the expectation it cannot exceed the total project cost of $16 million.
Okay.
Okay?
The part that I remember most about what, and what I liked about them, not to be a salesperson for them by any means, was they were very straightforward on design and planning, all the stuff Matt's talking about. So when we get into the project, this is the project. It's not like we're going to be changing it. The entire time it's going up and blows the pricing out of the water. And that happens with some. But their method, that was the most enthusiastic thing I had, where their method was not to have that, which identified the savings that we should have over a contractor that may have their profitability built in to change orders. And you all were at that, so that was my impression. Linda, I think we're ready for you.
Ashley?
Yes.
Greg? Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, motion was carried. Okay, so then, we're back to you.
Can we just review quickly the calendar for the coming month, month of September? September 9, the West Central Ed Board meeting is at 6:30 PM up in Stock Center. I believe, Maggie, that'll be in the media center at the secondary building or the high school. September 10 is our work session. That'll be right here at 6:00 PM. Policy committee, we are getting back at it. So you guys will be busy this year because we have the 500 series policies. We'll start September 17 with policy committee at 6:00 PM. I would suggest that we probably pencil in about 90 minutes for these. They'll be longer than they were last year, so just know that going into it. We will meet at my office for that policy committee meeting. And then on September 24 is our regular board meeting for the month of September, right in this room at 6:00 PM.
So we are on number 10, Roman numeral 10, which says adjourn. If nobody has anything else to leave for the board.
Why didn't we talk about district goals?
We have not pursued anything on district goals at this point. We have the plan put together, but until we had, do you mind if I go ahead?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Until we had the, this project and some of that together, Matt will get on it here sometime during this year, probably, to kind of move us forward.
So it's fine to sit on old business and go?
Yes, so we're leaving on old business, so Matt wants it on there so it doesn't get forgotten. That we keep it up on the front of our thoughts. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
In the absence of Jacob, I mean, the motion-
Okay, we have a motion from Cheryl to adjourn. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Carrie. Thank you very much, everybody.